All right, the June 9th, 2020 meeting, Finance Committee meeting for the Cronkite School District Board of Directors is called to order. Let's start out with our pledge. Chris, you want to lead us off with our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thanks, Chris.
No problem.
Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Director Apple.
Here.
Director Hunter.
Here.
Director Frank. Director Russo.
Here.
Director O'Brien.
Here.
Director Zalinski.
Here.
Director Simsek.
Here.
Director Mendoza.
Here. Here, you get it?
And Michelle, you're on mute. And I'm here. Michelle, you're still on mute.
Thank you, Jim, thank you.
Gotcha, great.
My sound keeps going out for some reason.
Gotcha.
Okay.
There's a portion of our meeting at the beginning where we allow and invite public to comment on any agenda item for tonight. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on an agenda item?
We have zero attendees currently.
Also, that means no comments. All right. Moving on, minutes for previous meetings. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 27th, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Second, moved to second, any discussion? If I will vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. I'll report that we had an executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed contracts, real estate, and potential litigation matters.
Just real estate and potential litigations, Jim.
Just real estate potential litigations, thank you. Turning to Dr. Crater for the superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Yes, last week, the Department of Education released some preliminary guidance for the opening of schools beginning July 1st. The preliminary guidance states that schools located in the regions identified in green phase must adhere to the PDE guidance. Based on their guidance, schools may only begin instruction after developing a written health and safety plan. This needs to be written consultation with local health. The plan must be written by Board of Directors and submitted to PDE and posted on the district website prior to allowing students back into the building. The guidance that they provided to us is rather general information, and the PDE notes that additional guidance will be provided in the next few weeks. We're hopeful at this point that further guidance will provide some more specific information to our schools. Our plan will need to be comprehensive from the standpoint that it must be flexible in the event if we transfer or transition between different phases from green to yellow to red. We need to make sure that we are able to be prepared for that. Therefore, we will be considering models that will include face-to-face instruction in-house with reduced number of students in each of our buildings. We will also consider virtual learning that allows for camera interactions with our students and staff, and also potential combinations of these models as well. As we develop this plan, we will organize our efforts to solicit as much input as possible from a variety of stakeholders, and we'll also be sending out a survey to our families to provide input as well before we make a final decision. Certainly, this process will not be easy, but we will take the input that we get from our community and certainly take the safety of our students at interest here. Our goal is to have a plan in place then by July. Further reports that we have this evening, we also have our annual school safety report. I'll turn things over to Mr. Lockren, and then we also have our budget report from Mr. Juswick.
Thank you, Dr. Crater. Good evening, everybody on the board.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me here. I have a brief update about the safety of the district, and I think we've done a lot of good work in the last year and a half. In 2000, we received the grant for $35,000, which we were able to get the Raptor ID system, supplies, the glass block for the high school pool area, a bulletproof glass shield which has been installed at the vestibule in the high school, panic buttons, trainings, and we had handheld metal detectors. It's a tongue twister. But we're shifting that and probably exploring other preventative health trainings for the upcoming year. Speaking of preventative measures, we had the Safe to Stay trainings of students, seven through 12, 24 tips were given to myself and Dr. Adler at the time on the Safe to Stay app. They were all resolved. Our mental health services within the schools, the SAP referrals. Carnegie had 70 referrals. Crafton had 35, and the junior senior high school had 108. And then we average about 70%, 70 to 75% of parental sign-off once a SAP referral is made. And I've gotten great accolades from the mental health services for recognizing the high referral signatures. School-wide positive behavior interventions are strong in all three schools. And then we also had Safety Week in the past September. Fire, severe weather, reverse evacuation, bus evacuation, and the external threat drill. To keep in line, we have memorandums of understandings that are currently being reviewed and to be sent out to the four police departments in our district. The emergency response plan was updated in the summer of 2019, and will be reviewed again this year, this summer. Professional development, we have had district employees trained in nonviolent crisis intervention, entire high school faculty and teams from the elementaries. We've had mental health training in August of 2019 and focusing on trauma-informed care and suicide prevention. The school safety, I was, along with a Robinson Police Officer, went and got certified as an Alice trainer and attended a workshop. I also attended a workshop on the emergency response plans, which helped us modify and strengthen our current plan. And all district employees were trained and mandated reporting last year. This led, all these things led to a strong report from the audit that we had in 2019. The technology department has been working hard to increase the safety or system with hardware and software updates, anti-viral firewall and content filtering, and Bureau of the ability to track what students and staff are doing in real time and to log that activity and set criteria for content and applications blocking and flagging. We've also modified the acceptable use policy, put that into the student handbooks, and we have started the virtual learning handbook that we're giving out to parents when picking up their Chromebooks during the COVID-19 epidemic. For 2021, we're going to focus on the reunification process and practice that, also internet safety, and develop threat assessment teams for all three buildings. And that's a lot, but that's the update.
Thank you, Mr. Lockren. Any questions from the board in regard to the safety report?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Juswick, updates on the finance report?
Okay, I'm going to share my screen here as long as it lets me. So, budget, okay. All right, everybody can see the budget or the spreadsheet I have up?
Yes.
Yes. So, to finish out May right now, as I've been doing these since about February, this format, to finish out May at the moment, at the end of May, once we kind of close our books for May, we were at $22,581,000 in 1920. 1819, we were $23.2 million, leaving us $629,000 to the better expense-wise. Now, that has to do with a lot of, you know, the transportation not going on, substitutes, coverages, as we know, we have a lot of coverage expenses in this district. So, you know, all those expenses, we said money on utilities and such, that gives us a lot, a lot less than, as you can tell, we budget $1.1 million higher in expenses. So, we've seen a good savings, which that's going to help us come our final numbers, where hopefully we get into that balanced area or maybe even better. So there's where we are expense-wise. The other thing we like to do is you can see by object 300 through 900, that's outside of salary and benefits. We're going to have these salary and benefit expenses, no matter what. The remaining budget we had at this time last year after May 31st, from that 300 to 900 level, non-salary, non-benefits, was $661,000. We have $1.6 million in remaining expenditures outside with the budget. So, you know, anything we save off of that at this point is going to be a huge savings to the district and help that, you know, projected $711,000 deficit at the end of the year. That's going to clean a lot of that up, as you can see, we have that million-dollar difference. And also, we're doing some of those capital projects we've had on our list for a long time. We're chipping away at some of those, so we can clean up some of that. I think the magic number was 662, if I remember correctly. So we're cleaning up some of that, chipping away, trying to get 80,000 to 100,000, including some additional things that popped up, such as our pool heater. Now, if I go down the revenue on here, at this point, at the end of May, we're a little bit behind on the revenue. We're at 25, right at 25 million. Last year, we were at 25.68 million, which that's leaving us about 676K short. But where we're at on that, that's due to our basic education funding amount not hitting until June 1st. Last year, that hit in May. So that would bump us up about $1.1 million to give us, you know, a better view of that is $26.1 million over that, which that gives you a little bit over 400,000 to the good. So that just hit June 1st. So ultimately, at this point, we were at a surplus at this point in the year, 2.4 million without that 1.1 million. So you can almost say that's a $3.5 million surplus versus a $2.4 million surplus last year. We're partially through June. At this point in June, as you can see, the expenses are down. We haven't had our full month of expenses, but I put an estimate of what the full salary and benefits would be. So, we still have a lot of June where we're going to see some of these capital project expenditures come through as we are still under. As you can see, at this part, we still have $1.4 million budget. At the end of that, last year, we were, at the end of last year, we were at 68,000 under. So there's some room, but there are, we do accrue expenses for the previous year up in to a certain point in September, if not cutting it August 31st. So here's where also, you can see where we got that bump to 26.751 million at this point in June, and that's a final year number for 1819, at 28.75, 7 million. So we only need about one point, a little bit over one point, or $2.1 million to hit our budgeted revenue. I think we're going to be fine in that area. As you can see, one of the big differences is the state subsidies for state benefits, such as the Peasers. Also with that is the social security, as we get 50% reimbursement. We still have 1.7 to collect on that for the budget. We should be in that area with our budgeted salaries and such. It might come in a little bit lower because we pulled some of those, that coverage area, but everybody's still completing, still getting their full year's pay, whether they work certain days or not by the state statute at that point. We should be right in that zone. So if you put in that 1.7, that alone with some of the other revenue falling through, we're at 28.4 million. So we should hit that budget revenue we had last year, if not exceed it by a little bit. So that's the budget report. I'm going to stop the share on that. I'm going to give you a budget update right now. So, on our 2021 budget, we've had some updates on it. The big thing we were concerned about with our current budget was the ability we were going to have with the Federal Cares Act, and also we did receive an additional funding with the Security Act that, with Mr. Lockren, he just spoke about how we spent money on the pool blocks, Alice training and such. They gave us $35,000. That all has to be new expenditure that we tie into. It's all new expenditures, what we have to tie the funding to. So essentially, it gives us a zero-sum game with it. So this year, they gave us, it's all related to COVID, not school safety and security. So we did have a meeting on that today to discuss how we're going to use some of those expenditures. One of the options is, we had a, we've been, I guess, reviewing the prospects of bringing in a chill room from Allegheny Health Network. This chill room would cost $65,000 and possibly up to 20, an additional 20,000 with capital expenditures. So we're going to be able to pay with that, with this grant, if that's something we decide to move forward with. So that was 215K, but those expenditures would be, you know, we'd have to add 215K in expenditures for that. So that was pretty much a zero-sum game. Now, the Cares Act, we're going to receive $458,000. So we are allowed to go back to March 13th expenditures for some of that, and we discussed certain areas where we could tie this in. Now, it's for anything, for any COVID expenditures, anything that helps us continue education services. It was a much broader area. Now, the direction we've been given the past, though, is it's very open to how you use it. You know, one of the big areas is the mental health. So we looked at how we can tie some of our existing expenses to keep these mental health programs. Fortunately, we weren't in error. This saved us from even doing possible economic furloughs or such, this federal funding. So some of, one of the other things it has is we need a storage area network for the district, because if that goes down, that would affect our online learning if we have to go that route in the fall, which is still a possibility. So overall, this bumped our budgeted revenue up to 29.864 per million, which previously, we were at 29.236 million on the budget we submitted in the preliminary. So let me just pull my expenses right now. On the other end of that, we were 30.126 million expenses. So with some of these expenditures we had to make, and then some of these things we would need, such as a storage area network, we did bump our expenses a little bit. But ultimately, with the bump in our expenses, we have a new budgeted number where, you know, we're going to keep working on this as we keep kind of real time. We keep it real time. It's connected on my spreadsheet, so every time I change a number anywhere, it automatically updates. So now this gives us a fund balance of a deficit of $717,000 versus what we submitted back at the end of May, and I think we're at around 890, 890 area. So we pulled another $180,000 to $190,000 off our budget. We brought that down. And as the country gets back to work and such, we're hoping some of those local income tax numbers get better, our real estate collections get a little bit better to show us even a greater, well, not a greater, but a lower deficit than we're actually budgeting at that point. So hopefully that can make you a little bit happy that we were able to pull some additional money out of that with adding a couple expenditures. But we tried to make expenditures off this Cares grant we would have to make at some point. Like I said, the storage area network was $40,000 COVID funding. So we had the 55,000 or $50,000 in Chromebooks last year. We're going to tie that into this grant, so that will be revenue for an expenditure we had last year. Our Wesley Psychological Service, we're looking to pay for that. We're looking to pay for a couple salaries we currently have. With some of the changes with our psychological psych department, there's $10,000 we can tie up into that grant. So we tried to take a lot of existing expenses we may have had, otherwise had to make some tighter budget cuts as we go forward. This helps really maintain our mental health areas through the district, both grants. And then we've also, with the other COVID safety, we had a lot of, we had the ability to possibly do this chill room, and we're talking things like our face shields, a gator to, that's a John Deere piece of equipment we can run through the district to deliver supplies because of all the changes we're going to be doing. We talked about water, fountains, cops, hands-free sinks, possibly hands-free toilets, urinals, things such as that, face recognition thermometers. We were able to kind of brainstorm as a team with, we had our new people services director, and with us, Sarah. She was a great help with the rest of the admin team. And then additional Chromebooks in case we do have to go online. So we added a couple expenses, but we were able to bring down this overall budget, so hopefully that makes everybody happier. We're still working on that five-year plan. Where I got with that is I'm leaning towards more of a balanced budget as we get further along each day. This will definitely help with some of those monies pulled, and then also if our collection rates get better as people get back to work. And it looks like we're going that way, so that's a positive. But some of the things is just where our salary is going. So I brought two options. Let me stop my share on that spreadsheet and do a share on my five-year budget. So I still have my existing five-year budget previously that was, I'll call it a little uglier at the time. One of the suggestions made is, you know, show what we would have to do. I don't think that's wrong. Show what we would have to do to make that budget extend. So as you can see, we would have been out of fund balance quite early with our deficits we had, as we have three point, say we even break even, we had 3.1. We would have been out in surplus deficit. Let me scroll. Well, I'll look at, I'll look at a new one. So I made 20%, I made 20% cuts to the area of purchase services, purchase property services, supplies, property. I didn't think we had the maneuverability with tuition and transportation to make those cuts. And then 800s is more our debt with our ESCO project and such, and the financing, that's our computer leases, so we don't have the room really to maneuver. We did, so I took 20% out of those areas just to show the level we would have to go to if we made no salary changes. As I put the 2223, I highlighted that salary in red because that's the year where we're going to hit all these jump steps, where I think it was something like 12 jump steps. It was a pretty high number where we have quite a few teachers if we were to roll that contract as it currently is. So I had 3.1 million. My numbers, I'm sorry, my numbers changed on this computer, but it stretched it out. It changed on this from my desktop, that's why my numbers are off on this. So I'll have to, I'll have to show another one. But ultimately, it changed where if we cut 20% out of those areas, instead of being at that massive number minus 7 million, 20% out of those areas would have took us down to $1.1 million deficit at that point, which we still don't want to be at, but we're still building that five-year budget plan. Certain things came up with contracts we were trying to get on the agenda last minute, and that's really taken some of our focus the past couple days. But just to show, we would have to do a 20% cut in that, in those four areas in the budget to get down to a $1.1 million, yeah, where we'd be $1.1 million in the red after, at that end of that 2425 school year. But like I said, we're hoping some of these revenues really pop up as people get back to work. My scare is the 2122 state money staying static or less due to the fact of the tax revenue that hasn't come in, because we're just looking at individual jobs, or looking at casino money with the home step farms, that local income across the state, where, hey, maybe Allegheny County gets back quicker, but Philadelphia is still in the red. So how many of those folks are back to work fully? So, and that state income affects all of us, unfortunately. And then we'll see what they do with the federal, is they have continued to hack our title funds by severe amounts. We took an 8% cut this year in one area, 7% in the other area. So we went down $60,000 in the title funds, and they have the ability to kind of buy 15% each year. So we'll just have to, we'll have to continue to see where we end up with those uncertainties. I've kept those very, I've kept those at the same amounts versus reducing them at this time. So that's kind of the Finance Committee presentation.
I have a couple questions. Prior to our final vote on the 30th, when can you commit to having a final, the final budget that we're going to vote on? When can you provide that to us, as well as the five-year outlook, so that we have some time, that each director has some time to review it and adjust it and be ready and competent to participate in any discussion on the 30th?
I hate answering a question with a question, but what do you think would be a fair date to have it? What would you feel comfortable with to have the review?
I would like.
I can work around that deadline.
Would it be fair to ask that you have it to us a week before the meeting?
I think that's absolutely fair.
On the 23rd, I'm comfortable with that. I'd look to the other directors if they feel that's enough time.
Because that gives you a weekend to look at budgets, right?
Exactly, exactly. Well, and I know you guys are working up until the last minute to try to do everything you can, so I certainly don't want to, you know, abbreviate any effort you can make there, but I know every director wants to be able to be competent in this vote.
I think we're going to have the most information we're going to have at that point.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, and honestly, I think it could be pretty similar to what we have now, unless we get certain things in writing that says, hey, we're all going to sit here at our same rate.
Right, right.
So, okay, with what the information we have, I would imagine it'd be pretty close to that area.
So, by the close of business on Tuesday, the 23rd, you will have emailed to each director the budget that will be on the agenda the following week and the five-year projection. Is that?
I am capable of doing that.
Okay, we look forward to receiving it from you.
As long as it's good. No, we're all good, I'll get that to you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from any of our other board members? Okay, Mr. Schreiber, that is, that's the end of our reports.
Jim, are we not to have committee reports for Pathfinder and so forth?
We generally do that once a month, so we'll be doing that at our regular meeting later in June, if that's okay, unless you have something compelling you want to.
No.
Here today? Okay. So moving on to the finance section of our meeting, I'll entertain a motion to approve three items. Number one, the five-year transportation contract with Monarch as submitted. Number two, the UPMC Workers Compensation Program at a cost of $58,788 effective July 1st, 2020, as presented. Then number three, the district insurance package, sorry, the insurance package for the assigned general fund balance for the 2021 school year, as recommended by Arthur J. Gallagher Agency, at a cost of $69,964. Package does include cyber liability.
Mr. Schreiber, before any motions are made on 4.1, I'd like to add to that, approve the transportation contract with Monarch, subject to final review by the solicitor.
Very good. Thank you, Bill. So with that addition, any motions for those three items?
I still move.
Thank you, any second.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion carries, thank you. Under Section 5 Personnel, we have one item. I'll entertain a motion to approve the following. I'll entertain a motion to approve the following. The retirement package for confidential secretary Katie Kovak to align with previous confidential secretaries by the motion for five dot one.
So move.
Move to the second.
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries. Old business, any director of any old business they would like to bring up tonight? If not, how about new business? Any director of any new business they wish to share? If not, I'll turn to open forum. Anyone in the audience wish to ask a question of the board or the administration?
Just as a reminder, we have one attendee that looks in here. I don't see their name though, so I'm not sure what that's about. But if you are still viewing the session, yeah, at the bottom of your screen, you should see a menu bar that will allow you to raise your hand. If you have a question, go ahead and raise your hand and we will acknowledge you. I do not see any hands.
Thanks, Josh. Any board member have any open forum items they want to share?
Jim, I just had a, a question. We had met earlier in executive session. Has everything been covered? Are we done or are we going to go back into executive session?
Great question. I think we were done, but John. I feel we got the, the real estate issue and the, the litigation issue taken care of in executive session. So the next time we meet will be prior to our next board meeting.
Thank you.
Good. And to that point, John, next board meeting is June thirtieth? That is correct. And as Mr. Joneswick had indicated, we will have the, by June twenty third, we'll have the final budget in the hands of the directors so that they have ample time to review, be able to ask questions prior to, prior to the thirtieth then. Great.
Thank you. Thank you, John. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I, I want to commend John and Mike and Michelle for that great Carleton caravan. It was so effective with the police escort that, that many neighbors without kids in our district saw what a nice thing you had done for our kids. Thanks.
Thank you. And there were a lot of efforts at the end of the school year where a lot of stakeholders, along with Mr. Lockren, Mrs. Gattuso and senior class representatives and many of our teachers that participated to help bring all of those activities to fruition. Again, compliments to Mr. Lockren for getting Mr. Bill Cower to be a part of our commencement, which was, I thought he really delivered a strong message to our students that, that really hit at home. So thank you. I'll pass those, those along to those individuals.
Thank you.
And maybe to echo George's comment, of the usual events that happened at the end of the school year didn't happen. So we didn't get a chance to have some closure as a team and the staff administration did a great job on so many different events, even though they were different, they were, they were strong and there were some retirements that happened. So I guess kudos to the team and, and thanks to those that have retired or are moving on. So that's just my parting comment. Anything else on the board? John will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Move in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, nay?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.